That was not for you, Ms. Acosta. That was for Dr. Graham. Good evening, welcome. Pam, would you please note that we have quorum. Everyone is present with the exception of Judge Hagerty. Dr. Acosta, would you mind leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, welcome. Anhelia, do we have anyone signed up to ... no? Is anyone here to speak under open forum? Anyone speak under open forum?
Item 1.4, approval of minutes, none.
Move to approve.
We don't have any minutes to approve.
Oh, in that case, I second.
Item 1.7, presentations by individuals, groups, and organizations. Item 1.7.1, Dr. Williams said that the college president will recognize individuals who are retired from the college district.
Chair, few members of the board. These are always bittersweet moments, recognizing individuals that have earned their retirement but have played a critical part in the institution's success. So, we will be celebrating an individual who has been with the institution for 39 years. I'm going to ask Mr. Carlos Delgado, who serves as a locksmith with the physical plant, if he can come up to the podium and join me. Mr. Carlos Delgado has served as a locksmith with the physical plant. He's been with El Paso Community College for 39 years. He has the distinction of being the longest-serving employee in the physical plant department. He began his career with the college as, at that time known as a weed cutter, on June 22, 1979. At that time, the college was located at Logan Heights. During his tenure with El Paso Community College, Mr. Delgado has held several positions, including electrician's helper, campus technician, construction worker, and finally, that of campus locksmith. He's always been a highly motivated employee and took advantage of the educational opportunities offered by EPCC. He earned an associate's degree and became a Texas-certified locksmith. In this position, Mr. Delgado worked throughout the district. He could be seen daily working on door locks and providing key access to personnel and contractors. He could always be counted on to make people smile with his quick wit. He's always been ready to share his experience or tell you stories about his latest travels to northern New Mexico. The personnel of the physical plant and all of El Paso Community College will miss him tremendously. We hope that Mr. Delgado will enjoy his well-earned retirement, and we wish him well, and we thank him for 39 years of excellent service. Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Yes, and I'd invite the board to come down. Mr. Delgado, Dr. Surata stole your plaque. So, if you're looking for it, you know where it's at. Before the board sits down, I want to take this opportunity. Dr. William Surata has brought even more national recognition to EPCC. In the latest issue of Diverse, issue in higher ed, he was featured as part of the magazine's Hispanic Leaders in Higher Education. Dr. Surata was selected to be profiled as a result of his prominent role in achieving positive student outcomes, innovation, visionary leadership in higher education, which not only advances EPCC, but also all community colleges across the country. Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Surata. I believe Ms. Solis has the plaque. Please accept a framed copy of the magazine directly into her hands. We have so much more room when Judge Hagerty is not here.
You know, this is being recorded.
Yes, I hope so. All the way to Ireland. Pam?
Item 1.7.2, Dr. Sylvia Acosta, CEO of the YWCA El Paso de Norte region, will make a presentation on providing early learning academies at the EPCC district campuses.
Welcome, Dr. Acosta.
Thank you so much for the privilege of being here. I really appreciate you taking the time to learn a little bit about our partnership and see how we can expand it. I have a PowerPoint presentation that I'd love to share with you.
And I hope you're ready for some questions from Dr. Graham.
I'm terrified right now.
I've been meeting with her.
We're going to give you some hard copies in the meantime. Thank you. There it is. Thank you so very much for letting me be here. I have been with the YWCA now for about seven months. I started in March. I'm from El Paso originally, born here, actually lived right by Valle Verde campus. And so, that was a place we went to play all the time. So, thank you so much. I'm so honored to be here and so honored to be able to present this to you. I wanted to give you a little bit of our history at the YWCA. Our mission is to eliminate racism, empower women, and promote peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all. I say that because it's something we're absolutely committed to, and you'll see with our programming, those are the things that we do. The YWCA, this YWCA is the largest in the United States of America. I know a lot of people may not realize that, but it really is. It's a pride, it's a point of pride for us, and I don't think we say that enough. We were established in El Paso in 1909, and we actually became an interracial charter in 1946, eight years before the Supreme Court decision against segregation. So, El Paso has always been in front of the curve, and that's something that we're very proud of, something that we don't talk about, but we think needs to be shared. This is our board. It's very diverse, and I will tell you that, if you notice, it's all women. And we want that right to be all women. There's very few boards that are allowed to be all female boards throughout the country. And the reason why the YWCA can have all female boards, because I get this question from men all the time, like, "Why can't you have a man on the board?" The Supreme Court decided that when women made up 51% of a majority of the boards throughout the United States, then we would be required to have men on our boards. So, when that happens, we will gladly have a man on our board. But right now, our board membership is made up of all women. Our programs at the YWCA, we have after-school and summer programs throughout the city. We have 47 sites throughout the city. We have a youth development program, a teen leadership program. We do a dating violence and service learning. We also have supportive housing for homeless families and for elderly in the community. We also have a workforce training program, which we call LIFT. And of course, the partnership that we have with EPCC really is childcare. But we also oversee all the childcare services for the entire city of El Paso. So, when there are, when there is money that needs to be provided to low-income individuals, we help provide that wherever it is that they're getting childcare. And we manage that program for the city. We also have fitness and aquatics, and of course, something that we're very proud of is our racial justice and diversity training program, as well as our dialogues. Our early learning academies, we currently have 10 academies, two of which are at EPCC. And we are licensed by the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. We have almost 50 years of experience in early learning academies. We were one of the first ones, and so, we're very broad-based. Our staff is extremely trained, and I will tell you that a lot of our staff members come from EPCC. A lot of the individuals that we employ come through your child development program. We're also NACI accredited, and we have four-star ratings. So, our curriculum is broad-based, but we, one of the things that we try to do at the YWCA is make sure that children are ready for school. That's something that's critically important in our community and something that we're very proud of. So, our historical relationship with EPCC, we actually started about 16 years ago with EPCC, with the Valle Verde campus, and then, we also went to the Trans Mountain campus. We currently have 102 capacity, but we have current enrollment of 60, and I'll talk about why in a minute. And Trans Mountain, I'll talk about why Trans Mountain is important as well. Why, we have 53 capacity, and we currently have 48 enrolled. Our current relationship with EPCC, we actually have a tuition reimbursement program where we pay childcare, if any of our employees or employees throughout the city are interested in going back to school to get an associate's degree, we actually reimburse them that cost for them to go to El Paso Community College. This year, we've, this year, we already expended about $30,000 on our staff attending courses at El Paso Community College. And we also received funding from a program, which is the pilot program, which comes from the Housing Department, which we've received historically. However, is, and then, I want to give you a little bit of a testimonial here. This is one of your students, Eric Hastings, was retired from the Army. He had some challenges when he returned from the military. He had not been able to finish his degree. And so, he received a scholarship for our daycares at EPCC, and he was able to finish his associate's in arts. And he gives a lot of credit to being able to have childcare and to have a childcare where he felt that his children were safe. He actually had his children at Valle Verde, but he also had them at the Mission Campus. I mean, he didn't have the children at the Mission Campus, but he had his children at Valle Verde while he went to school at the Mission Campus or at the Valle Verde campus. So, I wanted you to know one of our testimonies of one of your graduates. And it's also important to note that he's a male. So, we often, and we did that on purpose. You want to know that males need childcare, just the way females need childcare as well. We would like to enhance our partnership with EPCC, and we'd like to request that that's something that you would consider. One of the number one, and I'll talk about it in the next slide, we'd like increased funding for our EPCC students. We'd also, I had a brief conversation with administration about paid internships. A lot of your students need to do practicums, and we haven't formalized that yet, where we would be able to hire them at our daycares and have them also do an internship where we would pay half of the salary, and EPCC could pay the other half of the salary, so that these students would get paid, because a lot of them really can't afford not to work. And so, what a better place for them to work than in a situation where they're also learning, and it's directly related to their degree. The other is direct hiring from the child development programs. We need to streamline that a lot better, where we actually post our openings with EPCC, and we're able to hire directly, because those are the people that we really want working for us, because they're already trained, and we think they provide the knowledge that we need in our, in our programs. Practicums, which go back to the paid internships, and expanding to new sites. The Mission Campus would be ideal. There is a lot of need there that's probably not being met. Currently, individuals that are going to the Mission Campus will either drop their kids at our Shirley Level, or they will, which is on Le Trevino, or they will drop it, they will drop them at Valle Verde. And additional portals for the Trans Mountain campus. As you saw, we were at 53, we have 53 capacity. We have 48 kids there, and we're having to turn people away and tell them that we just cannot accommodate their children. And that's not something that we want to do. We want to be able to provide them with an opportunity for childcare. If you noticed, I talked briefly about why we didn't have, we only had 60 kids at the Valle Verde campus. A lot of the, a lot of the students, I'm sorry, I don't mean to call them kids. A lot of the students at the Valle Verde campus really require subsidies, and we've run out of subsidies. So, they will not take their children to daycare if they don't have some kind of support to help them pay for their childcare. And we provide funding through our We Care program, but we only have X amount of dollars that we provide, and so, that may not be enough for them. I wanted to show you a graph of kind of where we were with our funding previously. So, at the high mark, we had been at close to $120,000. And now, we are, this year, and I'll show you in the next slide. Wait, that's not the right slide. Yeah, this is the right slide. This year, so, in 2009, we used to get, if you look at Access and Perkins Grants funds, at $110,000. And then, we would use the money from the pilot funds to supplement that. And we've, those dollars from the Perkins funds have been reduced tremendously over the last several years. So, we've gone from $126,000 to $34,000 last year. This year, we anticipate, if you're so generous, is to allow us pilot funds, that the pilot funds were further reduced to about $25,000. And so, our, our funding for this year will be closer to about $30,000. So, even though there's been an increase in the number of students enrolled at EPCC, there's been a decrease in the funds allotted so that students can utilize the daycare services. And the challenge for us really is that we're having to make these very difficult decisions for students. So, we've had to cut off students that are part-time students. They don't get any access to scholarships. We're having, we, we provide them through the YWCA. We'll provide them some type of scholarship. But because our funds are so limited, we have to only give money to those students that are currently full-time students. So, only full-time students are benefiting from this. And as you know, many students in El Paso have to have a job, so they may not be full-time students. And so, that's one of the challenges and some of the difficult decisions that we've had to make. The, what we'd like to propose is $150,000 to support childcare throughout our campuses. And another thing that I think is critically important is that they can drop their kids at any one of our campuses. We have 10 of them. So, if they live closer, so we provide scholarships wherever they are. So, if there's a student that lives in, on the far east side of town, and they want to take their kid to the Shirley Level branch, which is right there on Le Trevino, they can drop their, their child off. And if they let us know that they're EPCC students, and then, we verify that, then, we provide them the scholarship there. So, it's not location-based. Even though we have our locations at Valle Verde and Trans Mountain, those, those students can drop their children wherever is most convenient for them to have those children. And so, we'd like for you to consider and think about possibly a scholarship. And I will tell you that we did, the scholarship that's currently offered to the students had to be reduced to $40. We charge about $110 a week for childcare. So, 50 is half, we know that many of them actually have a greater need than even $50 to support their childcare. And so, we have two proposals there, one that would give a scholarship at 75 and one at 50. We're currently, because we've run out of funding, we, we started giving them only $40 for the students. And so, that's, that's kind of, I don't know which one, if you have any questions or concerns or anything that I can answer about the work that we're currently doing with EPCC.
With this, the $150,000 EPCC contribution, would you be able to access, or would the part-time students be able to access some sort of scholarship at that point?
Yes, actually, that would really allow us, it would depend on what you wanted us to do. If you said, "You know, Sylvia, we want you to provide support." Right now, we're deciding what we do, because we don't know. Like, do you want us, we thought, okay, we'll just support the full-time students right now, because we don't have money to support both. And they're both, they both have their kids full-time in daycare, but their status is part-time. So, yes, we could support part-time students. We could support full-time students at any one of our locations.
Now, Dr. Acosta, out of those numbers that you shared with us, are any of those numbers employees?
We have a smaller percentage of the individuals that we serve are employees. What we track right now are only those that we give scholarships to, and we can only give scholarships to students. We do not give scholarships to employees. But I, so, we, we have some numbers that are not counted in our scholarship dollars, because we don't track individuals that we're not giving scholarships to, because we actually have to go back and, and give you a report on what we did with our scholarship dollars, who we gave them to, and how many they served. And also, another thing that's important to understand is that kids go at different rates. So, there might be a child that is there for three weeks. There may be a child that's there for 12 weeks. There may be a child that's there for 36 weeks. It depends on the circumstance of that parent. And so, what we, those scholarships get moved to the next child, you know? So, if, if somebody drops out, it's not like, okay, that money was all expended. We try to find a child from EPCC to give that money to immediately, so that those dollars aren't lost.
Chair, I have a couple of questions. Dr. Acosta, thank you so much for your presentation. So, of the, of the students that are receiving scholarships, is it, it's my understanding then that they're all full-time students?
Yes.
Okay, so, no part-time students are receiving?
No.
Okay. And then, the 50, 50% part that the Y pays, is that through a grant, or is that?
No, no, no. So, part of it, because we have expenses to pay for, so, there's two things. So, the YWCA has a scholarship that we developed that we raised money for, which is called the We Care Scholarship. The We Care Scholarship is a scholarship that supports individuals that make less than $28,000 for a family. And those scholarships are awarded to individuals that cannot afford childcare. We believe, as you know, our mission is to empower women.
Right.
We believe that the best way to empower women is to allow them an opportunity to get an education, and also, allow them an opportunity to have childcare so they can go out and advance in their careers. And so, we created this We Care Scholarship, and we've had that scholarship for many, many years. And we use some of that money to supplement the part-time students that are currently not being covered by EPCC dollars. So, we're utilizing our dollars to support those part-time students, because there's nothing available for them once we expend the dollars for the full-time students. Did I answer your question?
Well, no, where does the money come that you use, that's your 50% part of, that you expend on the full-time students?
Oh, that goes back to paying expenses. So, most of the time are, actually, most of our centers do not break even. We have losses in most of our centers, because we give so much, because we give price breaks on, for a lot of our student, for a lot of the students. And so, it goes back to try to cover the expenses that we have within our budget.
Okay. And then, there was a slide that had, or a graph that had EPCC trending. I don't know if you touched upon it or not?
I did. Let me go back. Okay, so, the, if you look at that graph that we had, so, EP, that you all continue to experience tremendous growth in your, in the students that you have within El Paso Community College. However, funding has decreased. So, there was a time, and that actually ties to the next slide, there was a time where we were getting about $120,000 to provide childcare or scholarships for students at EPCC. There was a sharp decrease in the funding, I think, that came as a result of a grant that was probably awarded through their, through the Pell Grant, or no, through the Perkins Fund. And so, there was a sharp decrease in that money. So, we came to rely only on the pilot funds that were being given to us.
Okay, thank you. I understand that. Thank you. That's all.
Any other questions from Dr. Acosta?
I just have one question, Dr. Acosta. On the state budgets, Texas is spending a huge amount of money on childcare through the workforce boards. How much of that is coming your way for the Y from the local Texas workforce board? Because most of the people you're serving are going to college anyway, preparing for careers.
So, we get some money from that, from CCS, which is Child Care Services. That's where the money comes through. So, workforce development provides funding to individuals that have, that are low-income and that don't have access to childcare. That program has been closed, was closed most of the year last year, so no new individuals could tap into that money. The priority for that group is homeless and teenagers. And so, although we get funding for those, because we do have a, as you know, we have a homeless shelter, which is our, which is our transitional living center. Even the funding that we received through HUD, which is funding that we used to receive for homeless, that's completely going away next year, because they're not going to be funding that. And so, homeless children now will have to figure out how we cover their childcare. And the YWCA is the only safety net. A private, a private childcare isn't going to take a child that can't pay. A private, a, a private childcare isn't going to take a child that can't pay. But we are going to, we, we are committed to helping the children in this community. And so we will cover that somehow within the YWCA. So although we receive money from CCS, so CCS goes for an entire year. So if you get in the program, you're in for the entire year. But if they close the program, you can't get back into the program unless you're homeless or a teenager. Those are the priority groups. And those get filled very, very quickly. And so that's kind of the challenge that we have with, so every semester or every new child that's born to low income is going to have a harder time accessing that CCS. And the CCS funding that comes, that comes in to, through workforce development, we manage all of that money, but we distribute that money. So we get twenty million dollars in and twenty million dollars goes out because we don't just get that money for the YWCA. We give the CCS funding to wherever the family wants to have their child. We can't dictate to them what childcare they want to use. And so if a child wants to go to a childcare across the street from their house, then we will fund them to go to that childcare. So all of that money does not necessarily go to the YWCA. We just manage it so that people have access to childcare.
And do you have oversight on the programs that they are using at the different places where they are taking their children?
Yes, we, we manage the CCS program. And so the four-star rating and the TRS rating all actually is managed under the YWCA. We have the contract to do that for workforce development. And we have monitors in our program that goes out to monitor. Now, we can't dictate to a parent what type of outcome they would like their child to have when they go into a childcare. And that's actually what worries us the most, is the fact that we can't tell a, a daycare, you're not doing, you don't have the right curriculum, or, you know, your children are not school-ready. You know, we can't say that, we can't dictate that to them. All we can do is provide the funding so that the parent, we can try to educate the parent about the differences in early learning and, and school readiness. But it's, at the end of the day, it's their choice where they want to have their child. And our job is just to provide the funding so that they can have childcare. And that's separate from our We Care Program. The We Care is completely funded through the YWCA. And last year, I think we gave, was it close to three hundred thousand? Close to three hundred thousand dollars in scholarships to low-income children that could not afford childcare or after-school care to families.
Any other questions for Dr. Costa? Since there's no other questions, Dr. Sarata, maybe you can follow up with Dr. Costa and her team and see if maybe there was a, a way that we can work with the Y and, and check our budget. Maybe one of the service groups would want to participate or partner also. But then those further conversations, would you mind following up with Dr. Dr. Acosta?
Not at all, Chair. Will do.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for-
Thank you for your time. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 1.7.3, Representatives from SBA Towers IX LLC will make a presentation for the possible installation of a wireless communications facility at the Valle Verde campus.
Are we postponing it or?
At the request of SBA Towers, they, they've asked that we postpone that item. They, they could not make it out today.
Okay. Pam, would you please let Mr. Gallardo follow up with you in regards to when we're going to schedule him again? Thank you.
Item 1.7.4, Optional Presentations will be made by the Presidents of the Classified Staff Association, the Professional Staff Association, the Faculty Association, and the Student Government Association.
First and foremost, we would like to thank Dr. Sarata for this year's salary enhancement. We appreciate his effort and his administrative team for the collaboration at arriving at our salary increase. We have the following human resource items pending for further discussion. A request on an update of employees' job descriptions. Notices to employees regarding the status of their job title and/or their job description. Request for information on status of full-time vacant positions for recruitment purposes. PSA Educational Assistant Committee honored six students recipients of their scholarships, of our scholarship. Awards were distributed to these students for three hundred dollars each for the fall semester. Special thanks to financial aid for their assistance on this process as well as our IT support. Additionally, the scholarship recipients were invited and attended this year's Hispanic Heritage Event. We have a photo of that. It was a very enjoyable night. I think some of the board members were there. And if you remember, we had the speaker, Mr. Juan Quinones, with a lot of nostalgic culture-related presentation. These are the recipients who were kind enough to send us a picture. The students themselves took these awesome pictures. That's Mr. Quinones and five of the six recipients. If you can notice, we have several individuals that have very bright future here at El Paso Community College. Thank you. Our PSA Fundraising Committee, led by Michelle Taylor Houston, our chairperson, who will be conducting our Fall Festival on Thursday, October 26th, from eight to five, at our ASC Building B. We cordially invite you and members as well as employees to attend. The monies from this festival, as well as our VIP cards, will help fund student scholarships and assist our membership during their time of financial need. We want to go ahead and thank the committee members, supervisors, of course, because they allow us to participate in these functions, the EPCC departments that assist us in making this festival a great success. We hope that you go and attend. We have requested time on, for the, during the EPCC Spring Professional Development Day in an effort to increase awareness and committee involvement for our membership. We look forward to working with EPCC administration and getting our members involved in our governance process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you, do you submit that to Dr. Sarata? If, if you submit it, would you mind sharing it with a, with a copy and the board on it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to open up by congratulating Dr. Sarata, as well as the Chair, Mr. Fierro, in your national appointment as Diversity Committee Representative.
Thank you, Senator.
Your leadership in this area is so important, especially at this day and time, and we very much appreciate everything that you are doing.
Thank you, Senator.
Now, in addition to that, last month, questions were asked about resources and how we survey or understand how resources are being utilized. And it occurred to me that in addition to surveys, we could also offer that information to you. And so I've been working with my senators, as well as my vice presidents, on collecting information on different types of faculty, including libraries, counseling, and the more traditional faculty such as myself, and the ways in which we are investing your resources and seeking to understand the return on that investment. So tonight, I've asked the Senator for Libraries, Ms. Laura Liam-Breeze, to come and talk to you about the work that her type of faculty and all of our libraries are doing to improve student success.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, so as Rebecca said, I'm representing all the librarians, head librarians, and also thank you to Dr. Julie Finley for all her support. I'm not going to read the mission and philosophy, but we do have one for the libraries, and it has to do with how we also support the students and their curri, the curriculum and the faculty and everything. We have five libraries and a resource center under development at the ASC here to serve the dual-credit OER and other programs in the, in the center. Also, these are some statistics and numbers for District-wide Instruction and Services for Library Instruction Classes. Eight hundred and seven classes for library instruction were offered District-Y. Those are the number of students in the classes, seventeen thousand students District-Y. And also, there's also individual guidance and reference services that we provide to the students. Sixty-seven thousand, more, yes, six hundred and forty, sorry, that we provided as individual guidance. And then circulation, that's also our staff giving directional instruction or answering directional questions to the library users. Sixty-three, sixty-three, I'm sorry, six-three-thousand, I can, nervous, sorry. Library visitors, four hundred and thirty-three thousand District-Y also. And I want to point out the library instructional classes, that's eight hundred and seven. And that includes also working with the faculty to do more of the embedded instruction that correspond to the assignment and the curriculum that they're providing to the students. Also, computer usage, last year, all the libraries got new computers from the IT Committee Fund. And those are the computer usage statistics for the district, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five. We are doing the daily count of the computers. We're also providing online assistance, so these are the research guides. And for physical year 2016, 2017, two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-four lip guides were created by the librarians. And those are the statistics on the views, so they're being used by the students. Four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, that's four hundred and sixty-eight, eight hundred and fifty views during that physical year. And this also serves for instruction to support their courses and their research. For collection development, all the librarians also work with the faculty to develop the collection, to purchase books and new materials for the online databases. And that's the access for the District-Y online databases through texture, over five million visits to the, to the databases. And then, actually, that's the, they pull out an article that they were visiting. And this also helps our dual-credit students and distance learning, early colleges, this is for everybody. And then the web access management, that's just visits to the online databases. The day probably didn't do a transaction, but they opened, they did something. The ones above, they actually downloaded an article or did some research. And as part of the library instruction, we just are piloting at the Northwest Campus this, as an extension of the face-to-face. When we're doing the forty-X meetings, the faculty are always saying that they're dealing with retention issues with the online students. And we are testing this class that was kind of at risk. Out of twenty-five students, only fourteen to fifteen were actively participating. And we work with the instructor to develop a whole week of library instruction. And you can see already some of the testimonials of the students saying how useful it was. At the same time, they're learning how to do the web conferencing using the Blackboard Collaborate. It was an actual live session, live session, tried to simulate the same that we're doing in the classroom face-to-face through the Blackboard Collaborate. And based on the statistics from Blackboard, when was the time that there was more traffic in the Blackboard show? So we put it on a Wednesday evening from seven to eight, and all fifteen students signed up and asked questions. And then they were asked to do an entry as a discussion board, and this is some of, one sample of what they were writing that they found it very useful. They also said that it was the first time they have a live session like this virtually. All of the librarians also from different campuses serving in standing committees and other committees. And also Valle Verde and Rio Grande have been doing extended hours during finals weeks to help the students. And these are just some of the outreach for the children that we do at the Yenna Walsh and Laura Bush. That's a survey that was done for the summer program, a hundred and seventeen responses. So through the summer program, we ask them, like, what, have you heard about EPCC before? And thirty-seven percent of the parents responded to the service, that they hadn't heard about EPCC. So we think all these outreach programs also help to promote what we do. And the rest of it, I'm not going to go in detail. You have it in your printout, it's just individual activities that each of the campuses are doing. Outreach, working in resource fairs, symposiums, different programs that are put out District-Y. Thank you.
No, thank you very much for sharing these numbers. Those are amazing, the amount of students that you're touching. I, I do have one quick question for you, though. You mentioned that during finals weeks, two of the campuses are open, have extended hours for finals?
Mm-hmm.
Why is it only two of the campuses?
I think I'm going to turn that into lecture, Finley, because I don't have the answer.
Because we do get calls about that.
My understanding is that this was an initiative through student government and the perceived need was greatest at those campuses. And here comes our SGA president to, to field that question.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. So we started as a pilot program. We first did Valle Verde to see how many students would show up. And then we extended it to Rio Grande to see how many students would show up. And the first year, we didn't have as many students as we would have wanted, but the second year, we improved our advertisement, we sent out emails, we put the flyers on instructors' boxes and all that stuff, and more students came. So we're hoping in time to be able to extend it to all of the libraries, but still, we're still growing. We'll expand as we go.
Well, you know, I would love the opportunity for you to share those numbers with us when, when you get a hold of them.
Yeah.
And maybe Mrs. Mo's team can help you promote it within the, the district as far as the extended hours.
Yeah, we, we have met with the librarians, they've been very helpful and very accommodating to this, to our initiative. So, yeah, support it.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Spel. I thought you already allotted your time.
Hello again. Hello. So, good evening. Thank you for having us here. Today with me, I have Campus Representative for Rio Grande, Dominique Rangel.
Welcome.
Campus Representative for Valle Verde, Stefania Torres.
Welcome, Senator.
And Valle Verde Senator, Miguel Medina.
Welcome.
A few things that we wanted to, to share with you all was that we went to the ASGA Conference in Washington, DC, September 27th through October 1st. It was a really great opportunity for students to attend workshops in leadership, time management, to help us delegate, to help us with conflict resolution. We got to see a lot of Washington, DC, the Lincoln Memorial, the Washington Memorial, the Korean War, and it was just such an amazing experience. We actually got to meet with Beto O'Rourke and Senator Ted Cruz, and we introduced the idea of having a debate here at EPCC for the senatorial race. And, yeah, it was a great opportunity for us to network with other schools. Since it was a national conference, we got to meet people from community colleges, small private institutions and private institutions in New York. And so it was a really, really great experience. Another thing that I wanted to share with you all was that we met with Doña Ana Community College, ASNMSU Student Government, UTEP Student Government, and the Graduate Student Alliance, the Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center Student Government, and a Regional Collegiate Council that was hosted at UTEP. And this is in, in an effort to promote- Another thing that I wanted to share with you all was that we met with Doñana Community College, ASNMSU Student Government, UTEP Student Government, and the Graduate Student Alliance, the Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center Student Government, and a Regional Collegiate Council that was hosted at UTEP. And this is in an effort to promote collaboration within the schools and just to share our experiences and our issues and to try to overcome the mess of region, to just expand not only like a friendly hand, but also so we can, you know, serve as resources to each other. Another thing is our eighteen-wheeler finally left about two weeks ago, and it arrived, and it's been unloaded, and it's now being, it's now helping the communities that were affected by Hurricane Harvey, so we're really happy about that. I don't know if you all got the chance to see it on TV, but we were on TV. And, oh, yeah, yesterday we had the Stand Up Speak Out event to promote awareness on the problems of domestic violence. We had the wonderful Kristy Sims, who is a survivor of an acid attack. So she was very, very captivating of the audience, and her story is just very moving. And we had a really great turnout from the students a lot, and a really good turnout from the media as well. And I think that's good because it just helps us really, I don't know if you've seen the shirts at the Valle Verde campus, there's plenty of shirts right by the fountain, and it's just another step we're taking to try to bring awareness to this problem that affects a lot of women and men in the world.
We also were part of the RFP Food Concessions Committee, and we're really glad to have been part of that. As student government, one of the main things that they, that students come to us to tell us is there's not enough food options, or we don't like what's here, what can you guys do about it? And so we're really glad that we finally got the chance to bring our input into this committee, and we hope that the students will be happy with the decisions that have been made.
Were food trucks discussed?
No, they were not discussed.
We don't have any parking for them.
Oh, well, they were discussed, but there wasn't an actual food truck that put in a submission. So they weren't, they were, it was like thrown, the idea was thrown in there, but no one actually responded. We have one food truck right now.
Oh.
No, yeah, one food truck, the Rafa's Burritos. So they said that this is kind of like a pilot to see how well they do, and hopefully we can bring more and talk about it further in other meetings.
Good.
Also, we hope that we will, we hope that we will be able to be part of the committees that help make decisions about the buildings that will be built all throughout the district. I believe that we should have a voice in those committees as well, since at the end of the day, they will be serving students, and students should have a say in what will affect them. So we hope that we will, we're able to take part of those committees. I also wanted to give a brief update on the smoking policy. We finally, the committee was finally able to reach, it was, we met last week, and we were finally able to agree upon a policy that most of the constituency groups found reasonable. The committee decided upon having smoking areas at every campus, and we actually went through designating those areas. Those areas, however, will be discontinued after three years, and we will be moving towards a smoke-free, tobacco-free college. SGA still stands in our decision to promote and create a healthier learning and working environment, but we hope, sorry, we compromised our initial stance to go a hundred percent smoke-free and tobacco-free, so allow the institution to, you know, gradually adapt to the changes and to be able to change the culture within the college. And hopefully you support our, the direction that most of the entities in El Paso have already taken, and, and, yeah. The, I should also mention that SGA is going to a region conference this weekend. We're the president's school, so we will be representing El Paso Community College and Odessa Community College. Also, another event that we have coming up is Ability Awareness for Disability Awareness Month. It's going to be hosted at the Valle Verde Annex on October twenty-seventh from ten to one. And another one of the events that we will be having, I introduced it last meeting, it's the Know Your Rights Educational Forum. We're gonna, we've reached out to numerous agencies within El Paso that help people with immigration, with their immigration status, and to just bring awareness about different issues that face the immigrant community, not only here in El Paso but nationwide. We're going to be having speakers, for example, we're going to have Soñando Juntos, they're going to give a brief presentation about how to be an ally to those who are going to be personally affected by DACA and the repeal of DACA and the approval of SB four. So it's going to be a great, I hope it's going to be a great event, and I hope that if you all have time, you will show up and show your support, not only to student government, but also the students that are going to be affected by these. Also, we will be having our Fall Festival on October thirty-first from six to ten PM. The Fall Festival, if you haven't been, is like a carnival to invite our community at large to bring their kids, to trick-or-treat. It's kind of a substitute to Halloween, and it's just, we just provide families and our students and our faculty with a safe space to bring their family, their children, to get on rides, to eat great food, and it's also a really big opportunity for the clubs to fundraise. So it's the single biggest fundraiser that the clubs will have. So we hope that you will bring your families, you will spread the word. We're already in the works, we're talking to, we're spreading the flyers and the information about the event to local elementary schools and middle schools so that they will know about it, and hopefully they will come.
And where's it going to be held at this year?
It's going to be held at the Americana Village, so right by the portables.
Okay.
Yeah, at the Valle Verde campus. Finally, we will be having our Leader B One Conference on November seventeenth and November eighteenth. It's a leadership conference, and we invite every single, every single club to attend, the president and at least one member, but we're extending this opportunity also to UTEP Student Government, and hopefully, again, we'll be able to grow it further, to invite more people within our local sphere. And that's about it.
Well, thank you, that sounds like a really full calendar. Thank you, Robert. I have a question for you. I'm curious as to how Congressman O'Rourke and Senator, who's he running against? Cruz. How they responded to your invitation for a debate?
Congressman O'Rourke was very, very positive about it. He's like, yeah, we'll definitely be there, we'll be there, we'll take any chance to get, to go to EPPCC and talk to people. Senator Cruz, a little bit, was a little bit more iffy about it. We didn't actually get to meet with him personally, we've met with a staff member, and the staff member was kind of like, oh, well, we don't know, you need to talk to the scheduler, oh, but you need to talk to the campaign manager, oh, no, you need to talk to the campaign manager's scheduler, and we were given just kind of like, not any clear answers, but we'll have them.
Well, thank you for sharing that.
Any other questions?
Do you have your calendar of activities on a website or anywhere that we can look at dates?
We do not, but, well, we can work on it. That's something that interests you.
Dr. Leon, can we put a link up for them?
Awesome.
It would be awesome. There you go.
Great.
Anything else?
No, thank you. Yes, yes, Ms. Uxer.
What is the source of your funding for all your conferences and attending?
Oh, the student, student fees, so.
All of the conference fees come from student fees, so the students support your activities?
Yes. So the way, the way we fund any of our activities or any of our initiatives is through the student fees, so we get five dollars for every student that enrolls in EPPCC, and one dollar for every credit hour that they, that they enroll for. So if it's a full-time student, it'll be seventeen dollars per every full-time student. And so we use those towards our student unions, we use those to fund trips or conferences, so everything goes back to the students.
Just out of curiosity, do you fund, if you, do you have any carryover of your funds from year to year or semester to semester?
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't use all of our, all of our money one semester or one year, we, it rolls over to the next year.
So I have another question.
Yes.
If you were, if we were to increase tremendously in enrollment, then your budget would increase tremendously. So what are you all doing to help increase the enrollment numbers?
That's a good question. Will we, what are we doing?
Maybe that's something you need to explore with your team, because, you know, we're always talking to the board about increasing our numbers, and you guys would be very instrumental in, since you're in contact with so many of the students. You know, come up with some ideas or give the board some ideas, give the administration ideas, but that's something that you all can take on as a mission?
Yeah, sure, I mean, I feel like it's all of our jobs to increase, increase enrollment. And we, we do talk to students, and, for example, I believe one of our, since we've been promoting our Fall Festival, we've been reaching out to elementary schools, and we were just invited to, I believe, the name of the school, I can't remember the name of the school, but they actually invited us, they have this college week, something like that, and they want us to go present and talk to the kids about what we do at El Paso Community College. And it's just something that we, it was literally just brought up to us, but we will definitely figure out a way in which we can, I can tell you more concretely what we do to promote enrollment.
Or actually, more than what you're doing now is what can we all do collectively to increase enrollment, not just putting it on your shoulders, but we've all been trying and coming up with ways that we can brainstorm, and maybe you could enhance our knowledge.
Okay, well, something that I can tell you now is we are moving towards a very, very electronic, very media, concentrated kind of lifestyle, so we all have our phones at all times, we all, you know, we watch, we have social media, so I feel like a way for us to promote enrollment is to really just push our media coverage or just our faces, you know, just show, EPPCC is here, we're the best place to start, and just really push that through social media and just electronically. We need to improve our, I feel like we need to make our website a little bit more user-friendly because it looks, the homepage looks really great, but for students that don't know anything about how to maneuver through it, like, I've been a student for two years now, so I know how to get, how to move through the website, but I feel like if we make our websites a lot more user-friendly and we promote our website a lot more, we can, we can really just make sure that students feel like they can also, you know, be here. Does that make any sense?
That's great input.
Yes, of course.
I saw Marco taking notes back there.
Well, I know, you know, one of the things you all can do is follow Dr. Sarata on Twitter, because he's a Twitterer.
A Twitterer.
And that's, you know, one area that we can certainly use the young people's social media accessibility.
Yeah, you kind of caught me off guard here, but next board meeting, I can bring a much more detailed, you know, plan, I can talk to my student government to see how we can help you, help.
There'll be a new question next week.
Yeah, because, look, all you have to do is show them, if you, if you, if you help us increase by ten thousand students, look at how much more money you guys would get with an additional ten thousand students.
Yeah.
Just put a pencil to the paper, it's a huge amount.
We will definitely look into it, and we'll come back more prepared next time.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think, I think, did you have a question?
Would you be open to doing career days at our elementary schools and helping us with those events?
That's definitely something we can look into. I mean, we don't have any careers, but.
No, no, no. Just even going to college itself.
One initiative that we always have going on is trying to make the youth more civically engaged, so we do go out to, we have voter registration events at every single campus, and we just joined the Student Voter Initiative. It's an initiative to, like I said, promote a civic engagement among the youth, so some of us are part of the committee that actually goes out to high schools and tells students about the importance of voting and being registered and of being educated about local elections, as well as like county, state, and national. So, well, that's something we can look into, like I said, and we can expand our reach to middle schools and.
And even elementary is because Dr. Sarata started an initiative where we're partnering with schools. We have Campestre, Douglas, which other ones? So those elementaries always welcome, you know, because we're trying to create a college-going culture throughout the county, so that would be another initiative you might want to consider.
Yeah, changing the culture is definitely something that we need to work on all together as an institution, and just to promote not only, not only our college, but just going to college in general. So we'll look into it again, and we'll come back more prepared.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item one point eight, communications, none. Item one point nine, Board of Trustees Business. Item one point nine point one, the Board of Trustees will consider and deliberate on the litigation intervention regarding application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates pending before the State Office of Administrative Hearings, SOAH, docket number four-seven-three-one-seven-two-six-eight-six, PUC, docket number four-six-eight-three-one.
Motion to approve item nine point one, one point nine point one, one point nine point two.
Second.
Item one point nine point two, the Board of Trustees will deliberate on pending real estate matters, including the purchase of the KTSM office building and surrounding property comprised of lots one to seven and the south one foot of lot eight, and all of lots fifty-five through sixty-one, block two, South Riverway, City of El Paso, El Paso County, Texas, located at eight-oh-one North Oregon Street, El Paso, Texas, seven-nine-nine-zero-two, from Next Star Media Group Incorporated.
Pam, will you add to that motion for a buying price of two-point-five million dollars?
Yes, sir.
Can we have a motion, a second? Under any questions? I just want to remind the board that we're excited about the KTSM property, and we, our immediate plans are to lease it back to KTSM for the foreseeable future.
Mrs. Robles.
Aye.
Mr. Uxer.
Aye.
Ms. Solis.
Aye.
Ms. Nahada.
Aye.
Dr. Graham.
Aye.
Ms. Raffiero.
Aye.
Item one point one zero, Board Reports. Item one point one zero point one, Treasuries Report, none. Item one point one zero point two, President's Report. Item one point one zero point two point one, Dr. Sarata will update the Board of Trustees and audience on recent events that have transpired at the college.
Chair Fierro, members of the board, let me acknowledge also a member of this board being elected as the Western Region Representative on the Diversity Committee for the Association of Community College Trustees at the Anglo Congress that was held in September of this past month, so congratulations, Chair Fierro, on that appointment. The El Paso Community College Foundation's Second Annual Fajitas and Margaritas for Scholarship was held on September twenty-eighth. The event was a huge success with over thirty thousand dollars raised for scholarships. Over two hundred guests attended this year's event, twenty-two sponsors, and over thirty silent auction donors. Kudos to Dr. Grass, the Foundation Board, and Associate Vice President Carrie Mo for the great job that they did. The annual Diversity's Mentors Dinner was held on October fifth, and you heard some of it and you saw some pictures. It featured Mr. John Quinones, the host of What Would You Do?, as our guest speaker. Over three hundred guests attended, several members of the Board of Trustees were also able to attend this event. Earlier that afternoon, Mr. Quinones addressed approximately a hundred and twenty students and faculty at a session at the Valle Verde campus. Kudos to Ms. Olga Chavez and the Diversity Committee, that is part of Vice President Shauna C.'s portfolio, they did a tremendous job. Those who attended, I was out of town, but my understanding it was an outstanding event, so kudos to them. Mr. Lerma is not here, he is out of town, but let me acknowledge Mr. Lerma, our interim Vice President of Student and Enrollment Services, who received the Texas Association of Student Financial Aid Association Hall of Fame Award on Wednesday, October eleventh, two thousand seventeen, in San Antonio. The TASFA Hall of Fame consists of an honorary group of current and former financial aid administrators who serve or have served in Texas. Recipients have been designated by the TASFA as having been exceptional in their dedication and service to TASFA and the students of Texas. Mr. Lerma has been an outstanding advocate for our students. He's demonstrated commitment to EPPCC's mission to provide access to high-quality and affordable education in our region, so kudos to Mr. Lerma, as well as all of student and enrollment services and financial aid. The Valle Verde Early The Valle Verde Early College High School was named a two thousand seventeen. So, remember, this is the Valle Verde Early College High School, which means it's also our high school in partnership with Isleta Independent School District, a two thousand seventeen National Blue Ribbon School designation. The official announcement was made by the U.S. Department of Education through a live stream in which the YSD Board, EPCC Administration, Superintendent Dr. Xavier Leal Torre, and the Spartan Student Body and Faculty watched as Valle Verde Early College High School received the naming of that distinction. It is the only high school in the district to receive this honor and one of only two high schools in all of El Paso, uh, this year to receive that designation. In addition, Valle Verde Early College High School is the first school in the district to receive this honor in ten years. EPCC was represented by Vice President Smith, uh, and Ms. Toni Badia, who's the Dean of Dual Credit in Early College High Schools, as well as Dr. Carlos Amaya from Architecture Arts Math and Science Dean. So, congratulations to, uh, the Valle Verde Early College High School, Mr. Covey and his team, the faculty, students for this honor, and to Dean Amaya for his support. He's our designated dean, as well as Dean Badia. VV Early College High School was not satisfied. They received another great honor last week. Uh, there are only four hundred schools in twenty-six countries that are designated as Apple Distinguished Schools. The award goes to Valle Verde Early College High School in recognition of, uh, our continuous innovation in learning, teaching, and the school environment. There are just eleven Apple Distinguished Schools in Texas and is one of only two public schools to receive this honor, uh, that is not a technology magnet school and the only school of any type in West Texas. This is the third time that VV Early College High School has received this award. They received it also in two thousand thirteen and two thousand fifteen. Uh, the Culinary Arts Program hosted Chef Aaron Sanchez and his sous chef Clint from New Orleans to help raise scholarship funds in partnership with Lula. Two scholarships, uh, were awarded, uh, are, are to be awarded every year to our students, one male and one female. Chef Sanchez has committed to return on an annual basis for the fundraising associated with this scholarship. Twenty-one culinary students along with five EPCC chefs were involved in the event and are looking forward to continue work with Chef Sanchez and his crew for future fundraising events. Thank, many thanks to the Culinary Arts Faculty and Staff as well as Dean Rick Webb. The Respiratory Care Program received notification from the Commission on Accreditation for Respiratory Care, uh, that the program has met or exceeded all currently set thresholds for each of the required outcome measures on their two thousand seventeen annual report. Congratulations to Fred Torres, the Program Coordinator, David Coy, the Clinical Coordinator, as well as faculty members Vanji Deluna, Paul Andrade, Hyman Montgomery, uh, and valuable adjunct faculty members, as well as to Dean Paula Mitchell for this accomplishment. On October fifth and six, a Prudential Scout visited El Paso Community College along with a production team to shoot and produce a story that spans the arc of the impact of Prudential grants are making on students from elementary school to entering the workforce. A Prudential Scout was provided a tour of the Valle Verde Campus and the Trans Mountain Early College High School. Uh, many thanks to Margie Nelson Rodriguez, to Fan Chen, and to Dean Rick Webb once again for coordinating the tour. Uh, the Global Math Week wa, is October tenth through the seventeenth, just ended. Uh, EPCC math faculty and students from throughout the district, uh, participated in the topic of Exploding Dots, where students explore the use of an abacus in new and fun ways. Faculty and students registered through Facebook to share their experiments and experi, and experiences and took part in the global Exploding Dots conversation on Twitter at hashtag Exploding Dots. Uh, again, many thanks to, uh, math faculty members, Dr. Joanne Peoples and Fan Chen for coordinating the event. And again, kudos to Dean Rick Webb for leading that event. And I do have sad news to share. Um, it is with great sadness, uh, that I let the Board of Trustees know that, that Mr. Wayne Meeger, who's the husband, uh, of, of Dean Gail Meeger, uh, Dean of Nursing, uh, Mr. Meeger passed away on Saturday, October fourteenth. Uh, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and all of our faculty and staff, we send our deepest condolences, thoughts, and prayers, uh, to Dean Meeger and her family. Uh, we do have a listing of the arrangements that we will share with the Board of Trustees. And that concludes my report, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Sarata. Uh, Dr. Sarata, can you ask, uh, Ms. Chavez, if her and her committee can give us a, a son, a report on the, the event and some of its successes and, and maybe what she's looking at for next year?
Absolutely. And I know that, that she will be delighted to do that with the board. Ms., uh, Vice President Shaughnessy and I will follow up.
Thank you.
Item 1.11 Consent Docket. Uh, that includes items 3.2 and 8.1.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Thank you, Pam.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
2.0 Administration None. Item 3.1 Full-Time Institutionally Funded Actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Thank you, Pam.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 3.3 Information Items, No Action Required. Item 4.1 Financial Services None. Item 5.1 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Award to Western State's Fire Protection Company for the Installation of a Replacement Fire Alarm System in the Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred and Fifty-One Thousand Two Hundred and Fifty Dollar, Two Hundred and Fifty Dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, we're ready, Pam.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 5.2 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of a Contract Award to Simplex Grinnell for Fire Protection Services in the Amount of One Hundred and Thirteen Thousand Dollars.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Questions? Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 6.1 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval to Renew a Contract with Yankee Book Peddler Library Services in the Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred and Eighty-four Thousand Four Hundred and Thirteen Dollars.
Motion to approve item 6.1, 6.2?
Second.
Any questions?
Item 6.2 Consideration and Deliberation on the Acceptance of a Grant Award from the U.S. Department of Labor, Susan Harwood Training Grant Program in the Amount of Eighty-Three Thousand Five Hundred and Six Dollars. Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 7.1 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Lease Contracts with the Phoenix of El Paso Apartments to Provide Housing for the Baseball, Cross Country, and Softball Student Athletes for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen fiscal year in the Amount Not to Exceed Sixty Thousand Dollars.
Motion to approve? Second. Is there comments?
Yes, questions?
In honor of Judge Hagerty's absence, he would have said, "We should have just bought the whole complex by now."
Ms. Uxer?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I noticed that there were three accounts. I guess, uh, we have an account attributable to each one of the sports.
Mr. Uxer?
Okay. Uh, second of all, then, why, why do some of the sports earn a, uh, have a three-bedroom apartment and some of the others have a two-bedroom apartment? Having lived in some kind of facilities, I would much prefer a two-bedroom apartment. So, who's getting the privilege and who's getting less of a privilege?
Mr. Uxer, at this time, I'd like to defer that question to our Athletic Director.
Is he here? Is he here?
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Oh.
As, as, as he approaches, um, part of it, uh, Ms. Uxer, is, is the size of the team. And so, the baseball team and softball team, uh, have much more players or athletes that are associated. They get the three-bedroom because more of them will be in there. And then the cross-country, yes, will have the two. But I will defer again to our lustrous...
Welcome Athletic Director.
Uh, Lord, thank you very much, Mr. President. Uh, what was the question again?
I, as, as I've been informed, it's because the baseball team is larger.
Yes.
Okay. They get a three-bedroom apartment. However, it looks like if we get three two-bedroom apartments as opposed to two three-bedroom apartments.
Correct.
And that way, we could be equitable across all of the students. Could we not?
Yes. What we're doing is we're actually going to start to phase out, uh, the apartment rentals beginning in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen season and come down to where we're gonna, um, stick to possibly one apartment per sport, thereby increasing our, our budget, but also concentrating on recruiting more in-town, uh, of athletes.
So, so the in-town athletes don't get housing?
Um, some, they actually, the call, whether you get in, uh, housing or not, if you're in town, will depend on your living situation at home. Uh, at the, at this moment, we've got, in cross-country, two kids that live in Torneo. So, the drive every day counteracts that.
So, notice you have just a discretionary budget there.
Yes, we do.
Okay. Second of all, I noticed that there's a budget and there's expenditures to date. I understand. Are these expenditures made prior to the budget being approved?
Yes.
Oh, so we're spending money that you don't have authority to spend yet?
Um, we're awarding scholarships based on the fact that we will add the, uh, budget.
Okay. Okay.
Have we ever looked into purchasing, um, or building our own, um, housing facilities for these? I know, Doc, I know Mr. Uxer has asked before in the past years, but has that been looked into? I mean, in the long run, would we save money doing that?
Well, I think in the long run, it would be safer for our student athletes to have our own facility. One of the, one of the issues that we have when we rent from the Phoenix is we cannot dictate who the person is, uh, who the person rents across. So, in this case, we would love to have our own, uh, I would say, uh, student housing, but that decision is above my pay grade.
Yeah.
We already bought that one.
That's why we should have bought the blue house, the Victorian.
Yeah, exactly.
No, but that's too far. They need it on this campus.
Oh, okay.
But if Judge Hagerty was here, he would tell you that we've already paid for that building like ten times.
Yes, exactly. So, and in the long run, wouldn't it be better for us to look into that? And is there a way that we can look into that, Ms. Shaughnessy?
Well, maybe what we should consider is, uh, having Dr. Sarata do some sort of study and to see if it's feasible financially, uh, what the, the positives and negatives are, you know, whether there's a liability for us.
I would, I, I'd just like to point out that we really, really, just as a philosophy, don't want to in, get into, uh, property ownership and the associated costs and liabilities associated with saying.
We had one other question, um, Mr. Nihosa, is who tours these, um, does someone tour the apartments prior to the students, or not pri, each and every one of them, but are the standards being met for the student athletes?
Yes, yes. Um, each apartment is, uh, reviewed by the prospective coach that's offering the scholarship for that student and making sure that they stay to, uh, the status quo. And we also review and we also check the apartment once those athletes leave.
And, and if, uh, somebody wanted to tour the facility, you could, you could set that up?
Sure.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
Actually, we used to, uh, house the international students there as well when we had that program, uh, very strong program. At one point, we had, I think, up to forty students, uh, but we had quite a few, like two or three in one apartment. And they actually are very nice.
It was a, it was a valid question that we handed in regard to that, so. Okay. Any other questions for, uh, our Athletic Director, Ms. Nihosa? Thank you for being here.
My pleasure.
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 7.2 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of an Open Purchase Order with the UTEP Office of Special Events for the Use of the Don Haskins Center for Graduation Ceremonies for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Seventeen, Two Thousand Eighteen in the Amount Not to Exceed Sixty Thousand Dollars.
Move to approve?
Second.
Any questions? Okay, Pam, we're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Item 7.3 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for New Courses.
Move to approve?
Second. Actually, I move to also approve seven, item 7.4 and eight, yeah.
Okay, Doc, Doc Graham?
Yes.
Okay, separate. So, Doc Graham's motion is to approve 7.3 and 7.4.
Item 7.4 Consideration and Deliberation on the Approval of Continuing Education Tuition Rates for Revised Courses.
Any questions? We're ready?
Mrs. Robles?
Aye.
Mr. Uxer?
Aye.
Ms. Solis?
Aye.
Ms. Nahara?
Aye.
Dr. Graham?
Aye.
Mr. Fiero?
Aye.
Uh, under item 8.1, does Ms. Mo get to, to drive that car around? Uh, executive, please?
The Board of Trustees may conduct an executive or closed session pursuant to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code for one or more of the following reasons. Consultation with its attorney to seek or receive legal advice or consultation regarding pending or contemplated litigation or for any purpose authorized by law, discussion about the value or transfer of real property, discussion about a prospective gift or donation, consideration of specific personnel matters, discussion about security, personnel, or devices, or discussion of certain economic development matters. The Board may also announce that it will go into executive session on any item listed on this agenda if the subject matter is permitted for a closed session by provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Any vote regarding these items shall be taken in open session.
Time is eight oh four PM and the Board of Trustees are reconvened in regular session.
Our next meeting is scheduled for November s, the first.